I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody, we have a change on our agenda. Here we are going to start with Student of the Month and then we're going to do our reorganization after that. So, Mr. Collins?
Okay, let me explain a little bit to you the process so you know what's going on a little bit. We will call each of the principals up and they'll tell a little bit about what's going on in their school, kind of a news information period, and then they'll have the student of the month come up to do a presentation to them. At that time, then they'll walk back to the Hornet and they'll take the picture. The pictures then go up here on the board for that month. If you would please stick around to the very end because at the end we get a picture of everybody and those are the ones we usually use for the newspaper. So, we'll start off at Hornet Park. I think we'll start there. Mrs. Provis had her baby and so we have a substitute for her, so Dr. Hammack is going to do the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, I'm going to do my best to be Mrs. Provis. I completely recognize that I will be nowhere near as sweet, but I will do my best. We are really thrilled to be able to kind of chip in at Hornet Park. We're doing kind of a collaborative approach to assist with the administration at that building in that Mr. Collins and Mr. Waggoner and I are going to be sharing sort of administrative leadership for the next nine weeks while Mrs. Provis is out on eternity leave. So, I was able to spend my first day at Hornet Park today and I'm just kind of smiling a little bit more. It's just, it's a gift to get to be there. It's a wonderful school and wonderful boys and girls and great things are going on in that building. Just a couple of things are coming up at Hornet Park. On January the 16th, we are having our vision screening taking place in the building. We are also looking forward on the 21st to a skating party which we will share with our friends at Central. Thursday of this week, it's our Maintenance Grounds and Custodial Appreciation Day. That's a national event from what I understand and I just wanted to highlight our sincere thanks to our maintenance and custodians, not only for their day-to-day incredible work to keep our buildings up and running and safe and sound for our boys and girls, but Hornet Park had a little bit of water damage that was sustained over the break. Kind of had to do with that horrible ice and awfulness that we had just endured, but it is just neat to be able to see a bunch of folks working together to make sure that that building is nice and safe and ready to roll for school. So, we thank them. They've been working hard and a bunch of people have been working hard to make school, make sure that the school is looking great. But that's all I have to update for Hornet Park and now it's the most important part of our presentation and that is our Student of the Month and Abigail Taylor. I would like for Abigail to come on up and we're going to honor Abigail with some words. Come on up here, sweetie. Nice to meet you. Thanks for coming up. So, all these people are going to get to hear about how special you are because your teacher has some great things to say about you. Says that Abigail Taylor is Student of the Month. She's always smiling from ear to ear. I see that and she's one of the sweetest girls that I have ever taught. She works hard and she never gets frustrated. I can always count on her to help a friend in need or to work with someone because she's friends with everyone. Abigail hardly ever clips down. She's very patient. She is soft-spoken. She loves doing crafts in class and telling stories. Mrs. Gegg is so happy that you are Student of the Month for Hornet Park and she's super proud of you. So, this is Abigail Taylor, Student of the Month for Hornet Park.
I'm Craig Buckler. I'm the principal at Central Elementary School. I just want to talk about a couple of things that are going on at school and coming up. Our annual body safety program, which is kind of the good touch, bad touch program that is for Hornet Park and for Central and for South Grove is going to be on Wednesday, February the 5th. And I wanted to mention that tonight because that will happen before the next school board meeting. Detective Terry Hall presents this program at all three schools. The nice thing about this is Mr. Hall meets with parents the night before, which will be at 6 o'clock on Tuesday, February the 4th. Parents are encouraged to attend that. It will be at Central in the cafeteria and he really goes over each of the programs because what he does with the kindergarten and first graders is a little bit different than the second and third graders and it's very different from what he does at South Grove. It's an excellent program. This is the third or fourth year that Detective Paul has kind of spoken to our boys and girls and so it's just really important. He's spoken to thousands of students across the country over the years on this subject. So, really important. I want to take a minute to celebrate some success that we've had at Central. The focus of our cluster meetings or our strategy for the students this year is informational text and we're using the detective text is what we're calling it. The boys and girls are learning different strategies in the thieves and each one of the letters means something different. They're stealing information from nonfiction text. We just did our winter testing within WEA and that test, if you're not familiar, divides the boys and girls into low, low average, average, high average, and high. And I'm really pleased to report that in fall, we had 132 second graders and 98 third graders that fell into the low average categories, but by winter, we only had 111 second graders and 62 third graders in the nonfiction section. So, we halved the amount of third graders that were falling in that low category. This is a collaborative effort of the teachers, the students, some parent work, myself. We're all working on this nonfiction focus and we have the data now to show that it's paying off and we've only done about a third of the strategy. So, we're really excited to see once they've learned everything, what the spring scores will be. My Student of the Month unfortunately couldn't attend, so I may go ahead and read the comments about Quincy and then I'll take her stuff and make sure. We have our Central celebration this Thursday at 2:00, so she'll be recognized in front of all of the boys and girls and staff at Central. But Quincy Haynes is our Student of the Month from November. She's a second grader in Mrs. Harden's class. She states that Quincy is a generous student who goes out of her way to help her peers. She comes to school with a smile on her face and is eager to learn. Despite the difficulty of classroom work, she tries her best and excels in math and reading. She is one of the top students in the class. Quincy is kind-hearted, polite, and well-respected among her teachers and classmates. Her positivity and smile are contagious. She is a joy to have in class. In music, Mrs. Edder says Quincy is a wonderful singer who's excellent behavior sets a good example for the other students to follow. Mrs. Weishon, our Applied Technology teacher, reports that Quincy is one of the sweetest students she teaches. She is a great role model and her attitude and responsibility show in her work. Mrs. Sutton describes Quincy as a bright spot in her day since she started her Beach Grove journey at Hornet Park. She is extremely respectful, a fantastic listener, and a great friend to all. She is a wonderful artist and a beautiful soul, which I thought is just a wonderful, wonderful thing to say. Finally, each morning Quincy greets me off the bus. She's ready to do her personal best. I wish I could have a school full of students with such a terrific attitude. So, I would be pleased to present the award and certificate to Quincy on Thursday afternoon. Thank you.
Good evening. I was just at South Grove. The boys' basketball team was beating Indian Creek, so I'm hoping they're still beating them at the end of the game, hopefully, but I had to sneak over here. So, South Grove is very proud of our Christmas service project. I know Christmas has passed, but it's just kind of passed. We do a service project with Servant's Heart, a local food pantry. Every year we do this project with them and we were able to provide Christmas for over 30 families in our area this year. Every year we start out, we think we're not going to get enough donations and by golly, it all comes together and we get enough donations and we can provide Christmas for families. South Grove also hosted the wrapping and staging of all of Servant's Heart's families in our school gym once again. We open up the gym on a Friday and a Saturday right there before Christmas. Volunteers from Servant's Heart come in to wrap the presents and then they organize them also when the families come in to pick them up. They're all organized and that's over 300 families. So, I'm glad that we can open up South Grove for Servant's Heart to use the area and the space. So, let's move on to Student of the Month. Hannah Horsley, come on up sweetheart. Both of mine are here tonight, very excited. And they didn't find out till yesterday because we didn't have school all last weekend, so they were both very surprised yesterday. This is Hannah Horsley. Hannah is the daughter of Brian and Allison Horsley. She is a member, or she was a member of the Girls on the Run and she is a member of the Geek Squad and she also plays the clarinet in the sixth grade band. And rumor has it, she had broken her collarbone this fall and still played the clarinet with the broken collarbone. Tough kid. Mrs. Wilson was Hannah's fifth grade teacher and she said that Hannah Horsley is a perfect student to be the poster child of South Grove Student of the Month. Our mission, which is ready, responsible, and respectful. Hannah comes to school every day, ready to learn, and she continues that readiness as she transitions to every class. She is prepared with completed homework and an open mind and she makes sure that she has all the necessary tools to immediately begin class. Likewise, Hannah is responsible for herself and her property. Her attentiveness to her lessons, her participation in class, and her superb effort in completing tasks are examples of how she assumes responsibility for her own learning. Even in the rare event of an absence, Hannah makes sure that she gets the missed work and finishes it in a timely manner. Lastly, Hannah is a model citizen. She is very respectful and kind to everyone she encounters during the day, whether they are peers, teachers, and/or other staff members. Although somewhat shy at first, Hannah always has a smile and a pleasant word to those that she meets. Her cooperative and pleasant demeanor, along with her attentiveness to her assignment details, enable her to be both a leader and a follower as the situation necessitates. And Mrs. Omech says that Hannah Horsley is in her Language Arts and Reading class this year. She is wonderful, she is a wonderful, bright, and hard-working student. I can always count on her to help students around her. She tries her best every day and participates actively in every lesson. Hannah is such a sweet, well-behaved, and special girl. She certainly has contributed to making this year a success and this year just wouldn't be the same without her. I know she has a very bright and successful future, so Hannah Horsley. And Kyle Aping, come on up, Kyle. Kyle actually plays on the boys' basketball team and he opted not to play in the game tonight and to come for this. So, I gave him the option, but this was very special for him, so he's very excited. So, this is Kyle Aping. Kyle is the son of Kurt and Diana Aping. Kyle plays percussion in the sixth grade band and is a choir helper for the fifth grade singing bees. He is also a member of the sixth grade boys' basketball team. Mrs. Fokes, who is just at South Grove in the mornings and then here and there all over, she says Kyle Aping is so deserving of the honor. He is the most polite, respectful, kind, and helpful student. Kyle will come to me and ask, "What can I do to help?" Or if you are ever in need, "Help," and he will help and he will do it correctly. He is the man, she says. Kyle agreed with the smile every time you see him. And she says, "I am honored to have met and interacted with this young man. He is a great student." Miss Hackman added, "I've gotten to know Kyle more this year as a sixth grader because of his outgoing willingness to help around the South Grove building." She said, "I pass Kyle every morning and afternoon as he heads outside to tend to our American flag and I always see a positive look on his face." He and another student changed the information sign outside the school building, which we need to get that done. It's got December stuff up. And he is one of the go-to sixth graders if we ever need anything done around the school. Mrs. Omech, his teacher, says, "Kyle Aping is in my homeroom class this year. He is a ray of light in the classroom. He walks in the room every day with a smile on his face, ready to take on the day's challenges. He is friendly and caring with other students. He is always the first one to volunteer to help if something needs to be done. Kyle is a wonderful student and I cannot imagine this career without him in it." Congratulations, Kyle Aping.
Well, Happy New Year and we are very happy to be back at Beach Grove Middle School. This week, our boys' basketball team wraps up their season and we begin girls' basketball, swimming, and wrestling within the next couple of weeks. On December 11th, we had our first Smart Start Breakfast of the year. We had about 80 people attend that. Our middle school robotics team finished second in Warren Township in December, which qualifies them to compete in the state level tournament at IUPUI, so congratulations to them. One night in December, I spent time listening to a wonderful band concert here at Beach Grove High School, a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade band, and Mr. Carney commented it was an excellent concert, but he was specifically proud of the fact that in all three bands, he had 100% participation. Every single band member showed up and participated. Finally, I want to thank our ambassadors club there at Beach Grove Middle School. They are a community service organization and they came in the weekend after Thanksgiving and decorated our building for Christmas and then came in over Christmas break and took all the decorations down and stored them away. But now, our most important part of the evening. This month's Student of the Month was selected by the Edison Team, which is our related arts team. Every team gets, our academic teams select two per year and the Edison Team takes December. So, Katie Cox was nominated and selected by the Edison Team. If you could come up, please. And if you recognize the family and Katie, James was our Student of the Month in November. Katie has shown a commitment to scholastic excellence, a positive attitude in class, and works well with others in a group setting. She is involved with after-school programs and provides a positive attitude in Buzz Club. When other students ask for help on homework, she is more than willing to pitch in. She also is responsible and makes sure everything is taken care of during snacks and helps with athletic equipment during gym time. Katie is such a joy to have in class. She comes to class with a smile on her face, eager to learn. In art class, Katie was also very helpful, willing to do anything that was asked of her, as well as offering up her assistance each and every day. She was my right-hand woman in art the entire nine weeks. She was also, she was also creating extra pages in her sketchbook documenting her life experiences. She's not only talented, creative, and helpful, but just such a happy-spirited young lady to be around. The sculpture she created in art was done at such a high caliber, it will be entered in a corporation art show in May. I've enjoyed all of the conversations we have shared and will miss her smile daily. Katie was a great asset to the boys' and girls' cross-country teams where she was the manager. Katie was at practice every day, helping take times, provide ice for injuries, taking care of camp, cheering on runners, and running errands for the coaches. Her attention to detail, cheerful disposition, and trustworthiness made her an invaluable asset to the coaching staff. Congratulations.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be with you here tonight. I wanted to start with one success story and then just a brief update. Last year, our students earned a total of 101 credits for both semester one and two and I'm happy to report that our semester one credits for all of our students combined was at 115 credits earned for first semester, which surpassed our students. Our students were very happy with that accomplishment and many are progressing towards graduation in May, so that was a great success for us. A brief update about our Life Skills and Wellness Program. During the month of January, we will focus on financial fitness. Our guest speakers and our Wednesday activities will focus on financial fitness. Mrs. Newman from South Grove will join us on January the 29th for our Physical Wellness Day and in February, our focus will shift to Schools Career. During the month of February, our students will have the opportunity to have a field trip to Vincent's University as well as ITT. Ms. Thomas asked that I share a little bit about our students who are working. She wanted you to know that 18 of our students are working and collaborating with 18 local businesses. February the 12th from 4:00 to 7:00, we will welcome parents for our progress conferences. Our parents will have the opportunity to attend student-led conferences and meet our student mentors. Each of our students are assigned one of our mentors who work with them each and every day. I want to introduce Austin Reader as our December Student of the Month. Austin Reader is our HEA Student of the Month for December. Austin is the son of Shelley and Rick Ham. He is a junior at the HEA and attends the afternoon session. He is also a C9 student where he is studying building trades. He very recently, in the last week, became employed at Kroger, so he is looking forward to that work opportunity as well. Austin was nominated for Academic Improvement and Attendance. Austin had near-perfect attendance for first semester. I think he missed one day for an appointment. He arrives on time each day, often arriving early for each session. He works hard academically and earned eight credits for the first semester. His efforts demonstrate his commitment to both academic and personal growth. Austin goes about his daily work quietly and efficiently. He is respectful to staff and students and makes a positive contribution to our school and community each day. Mr. Anslet stated, "Austin has continued to grow and develop. He has developed a better knowledge of his study skills and work ethic, which has allowed him to see the light at the end of the tunnel. He has been focused on his goals and with the same attitude and approach from here on, I see every opportunity for him to be successful." We congratulate Austin on his accomplishments and we look forward to his ongoing success at the Hornet Enrichment Academy.
I'd first like to recognize and thank Dr. Kaiser, Dr. Keely, and Mr. Tom LaMichael, as well as Dell Reed and Tim Babbitt because we had some money allocated to improve the high school athletic area. And if you haven't seen it, please go down there sometime, take a look. We painted the floors and sparkled them black and orange. We painted the lockers. We're going to carpet the area in front of the foyer area of the concession stand as well as doing some painting in the hallways as well. So, we're really improving the look of the athletic end and it was something we really needed to do. Our boys' swimming team won the Indiana Crossroads Conference Meet last weekend and today, right now tonight, we have an invitational going on down in the swimming pool. Both boys and girls are down there swimming tonight. Our robotics team, which consists of Hunter Wilson and Bryce Money, Chris McMillan, they competed in the county championship in November and their goal from last year was to do better. Last year, we were like third from the last in this competition that we're in, but this year, we finished in the qualifying round in the top half and there was 44 teams that were involved in that. We were 10th and so we were able to form an alliance with other teams and go on and compete. We ended up competing with the top seed alliance. We beat them in two straight and moved on into the semifinal round. And then in the first round, we lost and then we won the second one and then we got beaten the third one because we had some unseen problems with our robot as well as our alliance teammates and we lost. And so, we didn't move on into the championship round, but we ended up being third in the alliance competition and that's a tremendous improvement from last year. So, next month, you'll have the opportunity, the robotics team's going to come to the board meeting and they'll bring your robot and give you a demonstration and hopefully by then, we've qualified for the state competition. BG Isles coming up here pretty soon here at the high school. The middle schools and South Grove competition will be on Friday, January 24th at 7:00. And then the high school and then the finals will be on Saturday, the 25th at 7:00. So, this year, Mr. Bradford's going to split it up into two different events. Our varsity boys' basketball team is playing in about one minute in the Marion County Tournament that's that we host tonight and we're playing in Lawrence North. And our Edward Jones Investment Scholar Athletes of the Month for November is Joe Pick. He is a varsity basketball player and also December is Joey Pardon. This also plays varsity basketball. But now, our Student of the Month and what we're very proud of is our two students that we're going to recognize. First is Kristen Little. Kristen, come on up. He's the son of Kerry and Adarla Little. He's in the top 50% of the class. He's been involved in baseball, tennis, and he also is involved in DECA, which is a new club competition we have. He is community and volunteer efforts. He does a lot of work with Mr. Clevenger through Renaissance, our Renaissance program. He's undecided on where he wants to go to college, but he does want to, and he hopes he gets to play baseball as he pursues college degrees. Comments from Miss Fangman. Kristen's been my helper for the fifth block and I rarely have seen him at Florish for the last two years. She believes that there wasn't a better person in our school to receive a Student of the Month than him. And Mr. Banks wrote, "I had Kristen as a freshman in biology and remember thinking that I didn't know if he was going to make it." He is a true example of the four As of Renaissance and what our students could do if they just applied themselves. This last quarter, he had only one B and the rest were As. He was on the varsity tennis team and also plays baseball. He spoke to the freshmen this past semester about the importance of doing homework and doing your best to be successful in high school. I believe he represents the type of student that we want at our schools, for all students, to strive to be and that was Mr. Banks and I concur with that. I believe that we're going to miss him. He's done a great job for the, over the four years at Beach Grove High School and he's well-deserved to be in Student of the Month.
Our second Student of the Month, didn't happen too often that the superintendent's daughter's selected, Kayla Kaiser, come on up. Kayla transferred here a few years ago. She's a senior. She's in the top 25% of her class. Since she's been here, GPA is like a 3.6 plus. She's been doing outstanding work since she's came to Beach Grove. She's the daughter of Paul and Cindy Kaiser. She's involved in volleyball, basketball, softball, senior class secretary, and a member of Beach Grove High School Student Leadership Team and she represents the senior class. She's also involved with the community, with the Mary's Youth Council through the leadership team. Her future plans are to go to Anderson University, major in education, and then both play volleyball and basketball, which she gets there next fall. Comments from Mrs. Wolf. Kayla is currently doing cadet teaching at Hornet Park Elementary and is on the high school athletic leadership team. She is on tractor and an academic honors diploma. When she graduates, in June, she is very committed to all that she does and is a great role model for the other students at Beach Grove High School. One of the things that I feel is since Kayla's transferred here from her other school, she's done a tremendous job of getting involved in our activities and more importantly, taking a leadership role in helping Beach Grove High School, a great place to go to school. Her gary's personality is going to serve her very well as she pursues her goals and her dreams in life. So, again, present you our second Student of the Month, Kayla Kaiser.
As we organize, I would call for nominations for presidents.
I would like to nominate Janice King for president.
Nominate Rick Skirvin for president.
Okay, following Robert's Rules of Order, we'll ask for a second on the first one in a vote and then if there's not consensus, then we go to the second nominee.
I'll second the nomination for Janice as board president.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Janice King as board president. I have a vote, please. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
It appears we have a majority. Just so we know for the record, can we go ahead and do a count? Was that, was that a yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Can I go for myself?
I think in Robert's Rules of Order, you can.
Yes, I can.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes, I don't, I don't, you know. Yes, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I'll abstain.
Okay, and then we had a no. So we had a four, yes, one no, and one abstain. Okay, so that allows me to...
Five.
Five. Five.
The abstention goes with the majority.
Are you?
The abstention goes with the majority.
Oh! That vote wasn't that funny.
She keeps saying she's not getting anything.
I need to talk to Tim about how to shut those off, because I know, I don't know how to do it, because they beep beep and...
Mine's all silent.
I know, and it still does.
It's still beeping.
Did you go into the settings?
I tried that too.
Because there's a setting for like emails and a setting for...
Have you shut it off over here too? Pammy, have you shut it off over here?
I didn't shut it off. Yeah, I didn't shut it off. I turned the volume completely. Me.
But she wants to use it during the meeting.
But it keeps beeping.
No, I mean, I think there's a button you can totally shut it off.
It sounds...
So we don't have to, we need to go through the...
Oh, yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, I did that.
It's probably in your notifications there.
Yeah, it is.
The settings.
Oh, weird. It's a fan.
Well, I appreciate both nominations. I think we have many people around. We have seven people who couldn't hear our board. I'm just glad Phil turned the meeting over to our president, and I can take a backseat. So you will ask for, yes, nomination for the...
No, I can use that eventually.
Yes, absolutely.
But I guess we need to, okay, so then we need a motion to nominate vice president.
Nominate Tim Lutrell for vice president.
I'll second.
Nominate Rick for vice president.
Okay.
Do I have a second? Do I have to ask for a second?
I don't know the answer yet. I'll second.
No, because if the first one passes, then the...
Yeah, if the first one passes. If it doesn't, then connect for a second.
Okay, so now we need to vote on Tim as the vice president, correct?
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I need to take a number?
I would take a, just so we know, for the minutes.
Aye.
Aye.
Tim. Janice?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Six.
Ten.
Well, you're just a naysayer tonight, weren't you?
Yeah. It's nothing personal, I'm just...
It's okay.
It's the same thing once you're...
It's okay. Everybody has things shaken up a little bit. Okay, so Tim is now a vice president, correct? And now we need to make a motion to nominate secretary.
To nominate Beth Reddell for secretary.
Okay. Who would like to second that motion?
Second.
Rick? Is there another, do I need to ask for another nomination? Is there another nomination for anyone else?
I think you would just, makes sense, go ahead and vote, then if that wouldn't pass, then you could ask for a nomination.
Okay, so then we need to, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Nancy, you wrote in?
Yes.
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 Abstain.
Yes.
Okay, well, the majority rolls, so Beth, now secretary.
And I'll just, I'd appreciate it by doing, especially the secretary role, and the presidents are tough, because you've got to come in all the time to sign documents, and we just appreciate all the time you've given with that, Nancy. And I would just say that any of you who could fill any role, I'm respectful. So I just appreciate it, at least a little.
I didn't think you did. Okay, Mr. Collins, we actually need a quick home update.
Actually, there's a motion we missed.
We missed a motion?
Yeah, jumped to the very bottom. We have to approve the agenda and resolutions that go along with the reorganization agenda. I mentioned to approve the...
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
There was a question, I think, interest from the board on what are the various projects we're working on to increase achievement, and a little bit of comments about our achievement. There's a few comments I want to make before we get into some of the activities we're involved in. There's two factors, and one of them, we talked about when we talked about achievement. One was the socioeconomic factor, which we've all talked about. And the second one that we need to consider that we have no control over is our mobility. We have about a third of our kids leave us and come back or have some replace them within a year. It's very hard to get high achievement out of students who are not with you more than a year. So those are the two factors that kind of determine a lot of what goes on if you have no control over that. The next thing I wanted to talk to you a little bit about before we go into some of our projects is there is one school in the district that the Department of Education determined that they were greatly affected by the technology glitch last year, and that South Grove Interim Schools. So they were affected and recognized by IDOE as having a problem. I just wanted to point that out. The last thing I wanted to mention before we go into the projects is that there's only three schools, districts in Marion County that does not have a D or an F school. The ranking of schools definitely affected urban areas, and we were one of the three districts who did not have a D or an F school. So we just kind of want to point that out. We all want the best achievement we possibly can get of kids, no matter what the circumstances are. So we have kind of reacted to what our test scores were and tried to do different projects that might kind of help. So I'd like to have a review, and that's what I sent to you, some of the projects that are direct response to their achievement scores.
Again, before you start, let me jump in. I don't want, I never get too high or too low about a letter grade. You know, right now, there's not a school in the state of Indiana that agrees with the process of how they do letter grades. It is so inconsistent. We judge our high school on one facet. We judge the middle school on one. We judge South Grove on one, and then Central, and Hornet Park is based on how Central does. And if you've been following the news with the fighting going on with our state superintendent and the State Board of Education, they can't agree on what's the best way to measure it. You know, we've got, we've got great schools, but it's so inconsistent because you're not always comparing the same kids to the same kids. And so, like you said, I don't come in, you know, I mean, our letter grades were a little bit better last year. I don't, we don't do a big celebration about it because none of us agree with the way they're grading our schools. It's inconsistent, it's not fair. All the research is very, very clear about poverty, okay? And yet, that's not part of any factor related to how kids... So if you, if you, there's a study that both Dr. Keely and I did, our dissertations are by Daniel Tucucci, and I'll be glad to share it with you, it's a few years old. Beach Grove achieved in the top ten in the state of Indiana on academic achievement based on all these socioeconomic factors that surround the school corporations. We're in the top ten. And that data, I mean, our test scores are even better now than they were then. So, you know, we'll be glad to have a meeting. We could show you all the detailed calculations, but I can't tell you it's truly worth our time to do that because it's so skewed. You know, and here's an example. There could be a school in Carmel that was an A school last year, and if their scores go down, they could be at ninety-eight percent passing. If they go down to ninety-seven next year, they're no longer an A school. You know, we could have a school in eighty percentile here, which is a rock solid B school. We go down to eighty-three, we go down to a C. You know, if we were being graded on a ninety, eighty, seventy, sixty, something we all understand, that makes sense. But how they grade schools in the state of Indiana makes no sense. So if you go down that much, boom, you drop a letter grade. But yet, you'd still be in a B quartile on a standardized grading scale, so...
What's not fair, though, is, you know, people coming into the community are looking for schools for their children. Look at those grades, and it's not a true depiction of this school system and what we offer, and it's so unfair, you know, when they say, "Well, we're going to go here," because it says, "A." Well, honestly, come look at the school, because it doesn't mean anything.
Or, or in situations like what's close to me is, you know, people move to Beach Grove because of the schools, and they've got their brother that lives in Carmel, and their sister that lives in Speedway, and then something comes out in the newspaper, and then the first thing that they do is compare.
Of course, yes.
And then they're reaching out to anybody that they can talk to about, "Well, how come this is this way? Why is that that way? You know, they have just as much poverty in Speedway as we do here, then why are they in A and we're in B?" And, you know, it's giving them the correct answer, because I honestly didn't know what the answer was. I don't know if it's on a curve, if socioeconomic factors were factored into it, or, you know, I didn't know.
Socioeconomic is not a factor at all.
And Rick, I will tell you that our poverty level is much higher than Speedway. You know...
I know what free food is one inch is.
Yeah, that's what, that's what it's based on. And so it's really tough to explain. I guess the best way to explain it to someone that asks is, "Well, it's not really based on the traditional grading scale." And so you can have a school that really scored very well, but if they drop one or two kids, then they drop a letter grade, which I think was the case this year, as you look at our schools. And, you know, and then if we, so it's, it's not a concrete way to explain the fact, what DOE first came out with, it, they had a twenty-five-page PowerPoint explaining how they did the grading.
Our special education kids, is that factored into that?
Absolutely. One-hundred percent. Which, that doesn't make sense on any school level. You know, why would you take a kid who's been identified having an extreme learning disability and, you know, based on what, and Laura has to speak to this, and based on where they are, like an LD student is part of I-Step? But yet, they may have a reading level of X, Y, Z, but yet, they're counted in trying to read a grade level they could never possibly read.
And something I've never asked is, like, on the south side, we've always had RISE. And a number of the kids that go to Beach Grove at one time were part of RISE. Is there something like that on the west side of town and north side?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, every school, corporation, state of it, well, I shouldn't say every. You could choose to be independent. Pike is independent. They have their own special co-op because they're large. Carmel was, but they dissolved that and did some other things. We choose to have, and ours is a little bit more decentralized, but right now, most of the west side go to Wayne Township, except Brownsburg, Avon, and Plainfield are just pulling out. They're going to do their own thing. And so it varies in different parts of the state, yeah, how you do it. The large districts will have their own, like IPS for Wayne, but the majority of the districts belong to a special co-op, so we're going to have it belong to a vocational co-op.
So that can also factor into these letter grades, is where, you know, we accept learning disability kids, and other schools may not, so...
Right, absolutely.
Plus, the kids who don't speak English are included, too.
Yes.
Plus, it makes a difference in comparison whether you have a school with five thousand kids, you have a school with twelve hundred kids, you know? That makes a difference, too.
Well, the perfect example is Wayne Township. Wayne Township is a minority-majority school district, and the number of Hispanic-speaking families that have moved into Wayne Township. And what's so unfair is that those kids are graded like any other kid, you know, from the moment they come on board, they have to take I-Step, and they can barely speak English. And, you know, we don't have a large population of not English-speaking, but in our larger school districts, it's huge. Laura, what's our percentage? Do you know off the top of your head?
We have one hundred and fifty students are English-speaking.
Out of twenty-eight hundred, so that, that impacts it, too. So, you know, I don't get all caught up in letter grades. You know, we look, we look at I-Step scores, and our I-Step scores are pretty strong. We're the first to third in I-Step scores in Marion County on a consistent basis, and that's, to me, is a good comparison. You know, West Lafayette and Carmel, well, they're going to be in that ninety-five, ninety percentile just because they always have been and they always will be. So I think you have to do a major comparison. And, you know, our graduation rate, ninety-five percent, that's, that's pretty good. You know, and so, you know, the best way I would answer the question, well, why is this, it's, it could be two, three small factors. Two, three kids could affect it going down. You know, do we strive for A schools? Absolutely. And, you know, we'll be there. And they're continually trying to refine those factors to get more like a U score here, here a hundred, you know, like, we understand letter grades. And that's what Glenda Ritz is trying to do, because she's getting a lot of pushback from the State Board and the politics of the State Board.
They take your score, and then they give you points or take points away from you based upon what they call growth, but we know I-Step and East City ACA are not growth tests. So they came up with some fancy formula to try to make it a growth test, and then they take points away from you or they give points to you. So, you know, if you see what the growth from one test to another is, then they could do it on the curve, which we all know is not a bad, forces people to be on the low end of the curve. So these are the factors, and they've made it so complicated, schools cannot figure out what their letter score is going to be until it's given to them, which is another factor that should be simplified. Of course, if they would get a growth test that actually measured growth, they wouldn't have this problem.
An example, at Hornet Park in Central, we do what's called NWA. That's a growth test. We give it in the fall, mid, and spring. So we take the kids that we have in the fall, and we can measure them. And that's why Central and Hornet Park here, letter grades was...
B.
B schools. And last year, were you As? Can't remember. Bs. Bs. Well, because they've shown that growth. Well, when you give I-Step, it's not a growth test. You're comparing kids from last spring to this spring. The test wasn't designed to be a growth test. It's a test like the old Iowa basic skills that some of us are old enough to take when we're young. It's more of, this is how you're doing on this day, and they try to do it. So there's so many factors. In fact, you will not see any Marion County schools that I know of that are even out advertising or celebrating letter grades. We talked about that. It's almost our own little protest. Speedway used to put letter grades up under schools, the buildings, they've taken them down.
Well, I know Ms. Reader, and I know how hard she works, so I'd like to make a resolution that we change that C to an A.
Well, I guarantee you the effort is not a C effort. It's an A effort throughout our entire district.
It's tough, because we had just shy of eighty percent passing language arts. We had eighty-three percent passing math, which are good numbers. We want ninety, but they're good numbers. But we have seventy percent for reduced lunch, and they don't count that in.
They don't count that.
So we're making great progress with the children.
Sure.
It's a lot on growth test.
If we get our kids in the eighty percentile, that, that is rock solid B, B school work, that's great. You know, and our goal, I mean, we should be in the eighties, and, you know, and we take, we take everybody, you know, with a new change in transfer policy, we take them. We just enrolled over thirty kids between October first and today, and we had three or four walk in today to enroll. And it's no longer, well, it's a C-plus average. As long as they haven't been expelled from another school district or had so many days of suspension, we take the kids. And they're coming here because they want to get, they want to get a better education. And so, so, you know, I don't get all hyped up about letter grades, but I think I-Step scores are a much better gauge of how we're doing and the graduation rate and things like that.
To demonstrate how ridiculous it is, especially at the high school level, to get growth, they compare an eighth-grade general math grade or score with an Algebra I score. They're not even the same...
It's not the same thing.
Same thing. And then they compare an eighth-grade English score with a tenth-grade English score when a third of our kids move every year.
I can tell you that I had a young lady miss one question. One question on the math portion, and she was low growth.
What?
Who came up with this?
Uh, Dr. Bennett, who moved to Florida and who's no longer in Florida.
Right.
He's now working for a testing company that creates tests like this. Yeah, but that's, that's the ridiculous nature of that. That's, that's kind of the example that, you know, you could be in ninety-seven percentile individually, and if you don't go to ninety-seven point three, you're considered low growth, no growth, and that penalizes your school.
What happened is that was a pass-plus person. Okay? So they took all the pass-plus people who made that score in the state of Indiana, and then half of them got a hundred percent right, and the other half got one, only one wrong. Then they lay low growth because almost everyone got a hundred. Still, they got everything but one question, so...
So is the state going to fix this?
Well, the problem is right now, you can't get the State Board of Education and the Well, the problem is right now, you can't get the State Board of Education and the Department of Education on the same page. If you watch the news over the last two months, it's really been embarrassing. And and Glenda Ritz is doing, I think, a way level job. She was a high school librarian, next she knows she's state superintendent. And I think she's doing the best within her possible means, but you got a state board of education that are still following, quite frankly, politics of previous administration and previous leadership. I think we need to have this system like we just explained. It makes no sense to the common person. So, I mean, let's go to the, let's go to the ballgame Friday night here and try to explain to our parents up in the stands how letter grades are calculated. They're gonna say, what? It ma- it makes no sense.
So and all the superintendents get together and bum rush the
We we have, we have, we have, we have attended meetings, we have, we've attended hearings, our our school board association, our state superintendents association, our principals association, Todd Bass is good friends with Laura and I. We've gone to all these meetings, we said, what you're doing is wrong, it's not a true measure of pure growth. Now, what Glenda Ritz would like to do is take the test that we use at Hornet Park at Central, the NWA. She would like to give it three or four times a year, because it goes up through the ninth grade, I believe. And she would like to
We give it to high, we give it to high schools.
Yeah. She would like to have a test like that where you give it in the fall, you give it in the spring, and then you, at Christmas kind of a gauge, and then you give it in the spring. She will, that's pure growth.
Yeah.
And and right now, you have to be in school for a hundred and twenty days for it to count.
Hundred and twenty-six.
Hundred and twenty-six. You know, so within that school to count that grade, that's that's a real, I can understand that. You know, that's pretty simple. Always around the table and say, you give a test, beginning of the year, end of the year, you measure the growth, and you assign a letter grade. And and you know, we have the growth down to the teacher level. And if we have a teacher that doesn't have growth, they're going on improvement plans. You know, so so the idea of growth and the idea of letter grades, yeah, let's let's have that. But let's use a measure that makes sense to a reasonable educated person when you can explain it to them, it makes sense. What's done at K one, two, and three makes sense.
I have a question. Can you give those tests even though they're not recognized for us to see growth?
We do it in, we do it in K through three.
And we do it at
And we do it at the high school.
And we do it at the high school.
And now we don't, we only do it in reading at the high school, because we wanna see which classes they go into and that type of, because if they can't read the material, they really can't do very well in the class. We dropped it at the South Grove in the middle school because we picked up acuity, because acuity was furnished by the state. Supposedly it was aligned with the state.
A similar test.
Now the, and it is somewhat similar, because we, they do give it more than once, which gives you some some growth. But and also it's aligned to the I-Step. So we did not do NWA.
Well, let's let's ask, would you guys kind of talk about acuity?
Acuity
Because of a growth and a diagnostic.
Right, acuity predictive is what we give, so if you guys can
We we started out our first year doing diagnostic part and found that it was not, it didn't give us what we needed. And you did both, I think, the first year. She and I both do predictive now, which my teachers tell me the first three or the first two are pretty good, but the last one is not very predictive.
And and like the first test that they take, acuity A early in the fall, is a little bit of third grade standards, a little bit of fourth grade standards. And then the next one that they take B, which is around Christmas time, is the fourth grade standards, a couple of third grade standards, and then the last one that they take C, which they're gonna take here in another couple of weeks, is all grade, on grade level. So it's really not even a growth test either, because it's not testing the same sort of skills, it it changes.
What a growth test has to do is you start in the test, and if you get a lot of the questions right, it bumps you up a level. You get more right, it bumps you up a level, then all of a sudden you start missing them, and it finds out where that point is that you are are successful. A acuity test or these other tests, they just say whether you've got so many right or didn't right. And and you also, you could be so smart that you can answer all the questions, or you could, they can all be so hard that you miss them all, it does not tell you what your level is.
Acuity is nice in the sense that it does help us predict who's gonna pass I-Step or not. Um, if we can find out soon enough so that we can help them, but like like I said, the last round of acuity is still coming up. Uh, but we do use the information from acuity A and acuity B to help remediate students that look like they're not gonna pass I-Step. It also provides instructional resources that zeroes in on the specific skills that the students aren't doing well in. So if Craig Buckler wasn't doing well in fractions, adding and subtracting fractions, it would give him tutorials on his own and then re-quiz him on his own, and the teacher can kind of watch through a series of reports on how they're doing. So that acuity is nice in that sense, is that it provides tutorials and and we can really pinpoint skills, but it's not a growth test either. But it's a little more data. Unfortunately, if we were to give NWA, we'd probably have to knock out acuity because that would be entirely too much testing.
Well, I, the reason I have, we've got a decade measure of real growth, and you could take that to whomever and say, look, you gave us this, but here's the real growth of what we have, and this is where you're making a mistake.
Trust me, if we could switch to NWA tomorrow, we'd be doing it in a heartbeat. I think when acuity came out, Kit and I, you probably were, we really thought it was gonna kind of be like NWA, and it didn't end up being that. Uh, but we used to give NWA, and we liked the results that we had. Um, and it showed growth for lack thereof.
I do want you to know that I did give a bunch of data to the TAP representatives, because they are making a presentation to the senators about using SAS and using NWA as the test. So it is, we are trying. It's whether, what happens is that the state has invested so much money in us that to to turn around would be difficult for us.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to make a suggestion. We have a board meeting on the twenty-eighth with our new approved calendar. It's a work session. I'd like to suggest, Kit, what do we hold off on?
Yeah, I think we've, I like the discussion we've had, but this would be
Let's invite the principals to come in that night and and bring some information, you know, because we really haven't spent a lot of time on NWA, what that really means.
I'd kinda like to show you how complicated this is, to actually go through it with you, even though it's, there's nothing we can do about it. But it it does show how complicated it is and how really unfair a lot of it is.
I just thought maybe we add another way of testing, that we would have an initiative to show them, you know, what you gave us and what the true score is to them.
At this point, I think we got enough of the initiative, because I've I've given all kinds of stuff. And in our state, they're taking all of the data or the reports that I have and giving them to Clarksville.
And the fact that the NWA is is a good assessment for us.
I would talk to her, the state superintendent, and say, this is what we're doing, think about NWA.
And and Tom Turlock, it works, he left here to go work for NWA. He became such an expert on it, using it in Central, that's his, that stage of his life.
So what I did, so we don't, is I gave you some of the initiatives we've done as a response to trying to do as best we can with what we have to raise achievement. And I'll go through each of them, the first pages of the language arts and the second pages.
Well, again, let's come back on the twenty-eighth. I know principals, it's another night out, but we'll have some food. And let's focus on that night, on some discussion on academic achievement. You know, we can talk more about some of the programs we're doing and and, you know, talk a little bit more about the tests that we're using at the different grade levels and have some good discussion on where we might wanna go down the road. Because it sounds like it's, maybe it's a good time to revisit what we're doing with our South Grove and the middle school and and go from there.
Is that a long curriculum?
Yeah, a lot.
How about a TAP update? Do you have a TAP update?
No, I wanted to spend all the time on this.
Okay.
Dr. Han. So my update just had two items, one being the year-end summative report for adult and child. That is our school-based services collaboration where we have at least one therapist and one behavioral specialist in each building. Some have two or three. I thought that their year-end report was impressive and included it in your documents. Um, it's the colorful ones, lots of pretty charts. Just a couple of pieces on that document that I thought were interesting. For the calendar year, they were able to provide two thousand fifty-six service hours to children and families. Um, and that's one hundred percent not impactful financially on our school district. But one of the the key pieces, it's not just student-based, it's family-based. Um, and I thought that it was pretty impressive that they did a parent survey for clients that are on board with the program. And ninety-eight percent of the parents reported satisfaction in services and also reported, ninety-six percent reported, these are parents, that they're better equipped to help their child. I thought that that was pretty, pretty powerful stuff as a result of that collaboration. The second piece on on my updates is just kind of a, will you cross your fingers for us? We have successfully completed the second round of writing our Twenty-First Century Grant. This is the big federally funded grant that does provide our buzz club, our after-school, our intercession, and our summer school programming. They changed things up a little bit for this RFP where you can't ask for whatever you want as far as dollars or amount per year, but you are asking based on the number of students that your school corporation has. So we are asking for an increase from two hundred thousand dollars a year to three hundred thousand dollars a year. That's what we're eligible for, for a sum total of one point two million dollars. So this was a big deal when we got it four years ago. It was eight hundred thousand dollars to our school corporation, and we're asking for one point two for the next four-year cycle. We will hear by March sort of, you know, what we have. And I am super excited about this grant application. It is one where I think we're really reaching out to the community and its intent and trying to grow the mentoring program that we have for students K through A. So we're we're super, we, I I can't say enough, this is a grant that we think fundamentally impacts our boys and girls and keeps them safe, because it keeps them in a good spot. And boy, do I hope that we get it for you, so just just keep those fingers crossed. That's all I have. Any questions? Thanks.
Ms. Stephen?
Um, I'll do a couple highlights. The winter edition of the newsletter went out early December, and I wanted to talk a little bit about that too, in that the newsletter, every newsletter has a certain focus. And sometimes, like the back school newsletter, of course, does all the, here's the shots, the amputations you kids have to have, here's when school starts, here's registration, all those kind of things. The fall-winter newsletter, for instance, that was meant to be purely recruitment, to be honest with you. The the calendar was in there so that potential students could see, here's what the school year looks like. Pictures and just brief comments about some of the activities that took place over the first semester, so they could get a feel for our schools. Those kind of things took place. It was not meant to be, here's all the school information that you need. It's meant to be a recruitment tool. And as I wrote in my report, we also expanded to other zip codes this time. We're doing a little kind of experimentation. We went to four-six-two-five-nine, we also went to a couple of Greenwood zip codes. So, well, I'll continue to try to look at that and gauge, where should we go, what should we do, who's responding, all those kind of things. But I just wanted you to know that every newsletter is not gonna be the same. They all have a certain focus. And for this one, it was, let's see how many more we can get for this next semester and talk about the good things that we did at Beach Grove. So I wanted to briefly address that. And then we've had some really good media. As I sent you all the link, Dr. Keely was a star of Child Eight with Mary Mills, or Child Thirteen with Mary Mills. And that was great. I loved the way he walked along in the snow with her and stuff. It was wonderful, so thank you, Dr. Keely, for that. He called us and I'm like, can you meet with her? And he's like, absolutely, I'm right here, so it was wonderful. So he had a starring role. Also, CIEC, the Central Indiana Educational Service Center, came and filmed a piece in the Science Academy on December fifth. And they did it on the Science Academy, they interviewed Kevin Banks, they interviewed some students. And that should be up on their website this month sometime, they haven't given me a date yet. We also use it since Dr. Kaiser was in his best suit and tie that day. We used it for him to film the introduction for our district video while we were in there, so he did that too, did a nice job. Next week, and this is a big, 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 big deal. Mr. Craig Buckler, Principal at Central, and Dr. Kaiser are gonna be filmed for a national TAP video. And that is, that's a huge, huge deal. And it's just because of all the wonderful things that are occurring at Central and just, it's 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 awesome. So we'll make sure you know when that takes place and it's all completed. But that is a huge deal, so I wanted to make sure, gave a shout out to Mr. Buckler for his great job, and then Dr. Kaiser will be filmed in his office and things too. There's a whole schedule for that. I also wanted to thank Tim, thank you so much, Tim, for serving as liaison for the Education Foundation. So glad you're gonna be back. I got the rest of you know, he comes to every meeting, every single meeting, and he doesn't just sit there either, he actually participates, which is so fabulous. And and we just love having you on the board and being liaisons to the board, so we appreciate that very much. As far as Beach Grove Education Foundation also, as I told you, we've met her this many times now, but there's a big Pacers game coming up. On February twenty-seventh, which is a school night, all the kids in the district have been selling tickets, and Tim has been selling tickets and other board members for the foundation. And it's gonna be a nice night, because our Beach Grove High School choir is singing the National Anthem that night. And that doesn't usually occur. I mean, that's kind of a big deal, to be, sing the National Anthem. And we were able to negotiate that, so I feel very proud of that fact. That we're gonna be up on the big screen, they're gonna do a check presentation at halftime. It's gonna be all about Beach Grove that night. So I think it's a really neat thing for, it's got a good opportunity again, and I talked to their marketing person about this, about if we can couch this. But it's a good opportunity again to recruit, because there's gonna be other people than just Beach Grove people there that night. And to talk about our school and those kind of things will be a wonderful opportunity for us. So we're excited, it looks like sales are going well, and everything's due next Tuesday, so I'm excited to see what the results are of that. And then over the holiday break, it was wonderful, as you all know, it's, I get to write lots of checks during the holidays for all of our great students who earn scholarships that are funded through the Beach Grove Education Foundation. Once I get their transcripts, I'm writing their check right away and mailing it to them, and it's such a pleasure to reflect back on all the students who have won either that one-time scholarship or one that goes over four years, and to see their accomplishments. And I just love looking through their transcripts, to be able to see the grade point average they have and all the grades they've made in their classes. It's just a real thrill to be able to do that. So we have a lot to be proud of here in the district, and both with our present students and students who've already graduated and gone to more successful things. So it's a great thing, look for some more good things coming up. We have some other media opportunities that'll be coming up in the next month or so, and so look for that, and I'll be sure to let you know. So thank you.
One day last week, I think it might have been, it was after Tom was on, and then I was on Fox fifty-nine. Uh, Dr. Kit DeConig is the new shooting to in Greenwood, and we've been friends since our kids were kindergarten. Hillary and Cassie and Kayla worked with school together. He goes, hey, movie star, why are you always on TV? And I said, Ken, it's real, it's real simple, it's Melody Stevens. And 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 what what has happened is anytime something comes up, or a lot of times with things come, whether it's positive or negative, in this case, it was kind of in between with the weather, they'll call Melody. Hey, can we go on? I mean, they called Melody, they didn't call me, they called Mel Hayken, someone. And I was in the process of taking my daughter to that place, so Tom stepped on board. Well, then, the next day, you know, I give my cellphone out to people in the media, and, which is good and bad, but, you know, I get a call from one of the, hey, we come out and talk to you about the snow. So they came, I said, well, let's jump into my truck. And so we drove through streets of Beach Grove, and cameraman's video me in the front, you know, seat, and she's in the back asking me questions. And that has happened because we've opened up the lines of communication because of Melody's position. And and you know, I know some people out there criticize that we have this position in our organization. But I I will tell you that I I can't put the the dollar amount on the public relations it brings and and the recognition. We now, we pay a photographer to come to our athletic events, and I'm also gonna have him come to some of the plays and stuff and take pictures. And those are going up on our website, and then parents can go on his website and buy pictures. You know, we've done that with my daughter, and and to me, that's all part of this whole marketing plan. And so I I, you know, I pay him per event to come, and he he does a great job taking pictures, and, you know, he was at the swim meet on Saturday. How many times do you see swim meet pictures going up? You know, he'll be at the, we just started this about a month ago, and so I said, hey, I want you to come to the Christmas shows and the spring plays and take pictures to get that out there, because parents wanna see that on there. And and I think the more they go to our website, you go to our athletic website, we got a ton of athletic pictures up there right now. It it's part of our whole marketing plan, wanted to keep our our people staying in Beach Grove, to get people to move to Beach Grove. We've got it, that's the whole thing about economic development. We gotta get people that move to Beach Grove, not just bring their kids here, but move into our community. And the ones that come here but don't live here, we know they're buying goods and services. But it's a total package of what we're trying to do, and that's what's so important about Melody's position and what she does. It's hard to put a dollar amount on the marketing opportunities, but I think it was ironic when Brandon, the superintendent says, well, how do you, why you guys always in the news? Well, it's because they know there's someone they can call at Beach Grove to talk to. And it's not always the superintendent. We've got an an activity coming up for the Lieutenant Governor is gonna be We've got an, an activity coming up for the Lieutenant Governor is going to be coming here during Ag Week to, to see her X science program. So, and that's a great thanks to Joey Fox, who is her, her administrative assistant. Joey called me up and I sent him to Melody. And so sometime in February, she's going to be on campus. And again, that's just great publicity and marketing celebrating our kids. I know I've kind of rambled on about this, but it's such a critical component of what our school system's about. We've got, we've got to continue to send that message about, you know, great things because when someone asks us about, well, you're, you're a B school or a C school, well, you can't quantify our school corporation in a letter grade. And, and I hate to say it, but my daughter's a perfect example. She has pushed more academically the last two years than she ever would have been at a previous school. And she told me she got a report card yesterday, she said, hey dad, my GPA just went up one and a half points. Well, that's pretty, that's huge. In a semester to go one and a half point. And it's the rigor, it's the relevance in what we're doing. And that's why we have a lot of people that, that transfer in. Now we got to continue to get more people moving to Beach Grove. And I think the marketing of it is a huge component of what we have to do. That's why we're, we're going to have a marketing video that's going to be on our webpage. We're going to get, get the link out to our parents, we're going to get it in the newsletter. We have to continually sell ourselves. It's a huge component. So I'll be quiet as I'll keep on rambling off on this topic. But I think it's critical that we continue to move forward and do that. And there's a lot more Melody can do that, but just not enough hours in the day to get it all done. I'd like to, I'd like to send out a monthly newsletter from the school district with nothing but success stories to not only our, our parents, but to everybody in Beach Grove who'll sign up together. You know, just constantly getting that information out there. So that's on our, our list of things to do. You know, call it the Hornet Flash or something. So Hornet Blast, we talked about doing that.
Actually, just put it in the newsletter, if you want to receive a Hornet Blast, you could email me to sign up so that as we do that, then it'll go out to those people that want it.
Am I correct? Did I hear that we have one of the highest amounts of money per graduate given for?
Scholarships.
Scholarships.
I would imagine so. I don't know how you compare that to other schools, but I'm sure we have quite a few, you know?
I thought I heard that last year that we had X million dollars or something like that.
Yeah. I don't know how to quantify to compare, compare to other schools, but it's quite a bit. And then you look at the number of our kids that are going to the military. That's why I still think one of our things to do is get an ROTC program here. I just, I just think it's real critical, but it's a space, you know, I've had some discussions, but it's, where do we put it? You know, is there a building we put it? Because you need, I mean, Wayne Townsend built a beautiful space for their ROTC program. And, and I think that's one of, you know, we've got these 20 performance targets, maybe that becomes our 21st. But I think that's a critical component to really get our kids focused in on that. For those that that's their career, their overall career interest. So.
We need a motion to approve last minute's minutes.
Motion to approve minutes.
Mike.
Second.
Rick, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Claims, could we get a motion to approve the claims?
Still moved.
Beth?
No, second.
Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Dr. Keely.
Oh, one comment on the year-end financials, just real quick. It's really nice to, Brian and I worked diligently on our balancing of accounts and everything. And I didn't have to pay back one temporary loan that we loaned ourselves off from one fund to another. So it's a big accomplishment because of the way the funding goes, it's really difficult to do. We did have to pay a lot of different funds out of, a lot of different bills out of different funds, depending on the way the distribution of dollars comes through. So the referendum fund helped us in our debt service, our pension debt service, our transportation. And then earlier in the year, CPF. So out of our six tax-rated funds, referendum supported four of the six. But we did a diligent job and, and I wanted to thank Brian for his hard work toward the end of December to follow through the cash flows I did. So we're very pleased with our year-end. We don't have a lot of money on deposit, but we paid all of our bills. So that's good. We had a business change as far as personnel. And Heather Brown was employed over at Central Elementary as a secretary treasurer. And Heather Brown now needs to have a bond, which is an insurance, I don't know, policy to make sure that they do a background check and all this good stuff. So it has to be approved by you and then signed by you. So I would seek a motion to approve the bond that I have, that we've gotten through the business department, ready for her to go.
Motion to approve.
Mike, two seconds.
No, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, next.
That's all I have for that. Personnel update would be next. And emergency school closing last week was actually Monday and Tuesday only. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday was really the Marion County and the superintendent's and administrative decision to close school. But because of the emergency, we have been offered by the State Department of Education to have a waiver of those two days. Because of the waiver of those two days, we are not able to make up the days. So people who would have had the opportunity, and we have money set aside in the budget to pay people for those two days, will not have, not have the opportunity to work for those two days. This is something that occurred three years ago and I asked your permission at that time through the direction of Dr. Kaiser, and I wanted to ask your permission again this time. And I do want to let you know, we're not on an island on our own or on our own lily pad in this world. We had a Region 8 IASBO meeting Brian and I attended this morning, Plainfield IPS, Southern Hancock, Monrovia, Franklin Township. A lot of us had discussion on various ways to make up the compensation that cannot be made back. We're not going to put them in the end of the year. And some people have decided, some of those schools have decided to go right along with what we are doing. One in particular, Southern Hancock, was almost worded exactly like this resolution. They approved it at their board meeting last night. IPS has gotten a lot of feedback. So I think they're moving toward what we're explaining here. And then others are using kind of MLK Day and President's Day and giving people an opportunity, if they want to work on those holidays, they pay them holiday pay last week and then ask them to take a personal day in the next coming months. And that seems to be something that would be quite taxing for our payroll department. And so, and problematic at best. So I think this resolution makes sense. If you'd like to have conversation, it was sent to you late last week. I can certainly entertain that conversation and talk about it a little bit more, but I think it kind of makes sense.
And the simplified version, if, if we don't make up those two days, which we're not planning on doing that by the end of Tuesday, then our best drivers, clerical assistants, they lose pay and it's not their fault, right? And, and that's really the crux of it. You know, we, we feel we should pay those people. In fact, we had a, a transportation person come in tonight, wanted to talk to me about it. Robin said, well, I think it'll be okay. She wanted to kind of plead what we need to be paying. Well, Robin couldn't tell her until, probably tomorrow. But you know, you know, they work so hard and, and we just feel like, you know.
I don't have a problem making a motion to authorize superintendent to pay the certified and non-certified staff.
Second.
Emergency.
Can Mike go in favor?
Aye.
Now, do we want to go ahead and approve the emergency school closing resolution? Would you like that?
Yeah.
That's what I think it was. That's what we just did.
Didn't we just do the one, the employment? No.
No, no. My last one was, was another one that we can hold off or we can do it, it's not a time sensitive in nature. And I asked Dr. Kaiser to forward a document that explained information about a long-term employee who had served 26 years for our school corporation. And out of those 26 years, he has the, has accumulated 18 and a half years worth of not missing one sick day. And I explain that in terms of the classified handbook caps us at a very specific dollar amount.
Why do we do that? Because don't they deserve to be paid out if they?
Or sick days.
We do that, we do that for instances where we, I think that you can always do a motion like this to honor somebody who's done something extraordinarily good. What you never want to do is open the floodgates or open an opportunity where somebody who may be, because of the nature of their job, whether they're classified or certified, potentially could get 12 or 15 days. Different classifications of employees. This young man got five days a year for the last 26 years and accumulated 96 days. Other people certified in particular get 12 days or 15. If they're highly compensated or in the, even in the middle range, you don't want to, you don't want an open checkbook to pay people out all of the sick days they accumulate. So we've talked about the other end of the extreme and that is capping it at like 50. But we've never, we've never gone there because you don't want to pay them out in dollars when somebody retires because that could be thousands and thousands, thousands and thousands, hundred thousand dollars. However, if somebody has been a long-term employee 20-plus years and has accumulated 150 days, 180 days is a school year, right? If they were to get some illness, cancer or something, you want to be able to, they've, they've earned those days. You want to be able to treat them with respect and allow them to have those paid days in a bad scenario. However, when somebody retires, if they've accumulated a lot of days and it's kind of over the, the amount to just pay them out, we've capped that. And that's why we've come up with that dollar figure. And it's been in there, you know, I've been here 11 years and I know it's been there all 11 years that I've been here. And I know it's been here probably 20 or plus years. So.
Discuss this with Mr. English's sickness.
Correct. Yeah, right. It's, it's just, you want to be able to help people in difficult situations like Mr. English. But you don't want to pay out a cash check settlement at retirement time. So there's kind of a, a double-edged sword there. So when, I, I like the cap at the classified handbook and I like it to stay. However, I think that there are opportunities when somebody retires, that they've done a phenomenal job. 18 and a half years without missing a day. How, how many people this day and age can retire at the end of their career and say that they haven't missed a day in 18 and a half years? That's unbelievable. And so that, that will end up costing, and I'll just be as transparent as it is, it's going to cost $15,000 as far as a severance retirement earned, pat on the back. And I think that it's reasonable. And in his retirement, my reorganization and our discussion with Brian and Dr. Kaiser, we are going to save substantially more than the $15,000 because we're re, we're redoing the tasks and not hiring back somebody in the full capacity.
I think we, even if we weren't, I think we still owe it to him.
He could have very well have taken more than the days that he was allowed to me. More than what we're giving him because he was allotted more than that.
He's given back vacation days here and year out. They won't take vacation days and, you know, and he may, you know, it just, you know, this is really an exception that we would have this go beyond $5,000. Most people don't even come close having those sick days to pay out. And, you know, we don't have a large retirement plan outside of the hoping employment retirement. And it'll really help him in his retirement. And just has been a truly dedicated employee to us.
And I was hoping that you, your, your comments would be like that because I, I think it's an opportunity to say, 26 years and 18 and a half of those, you're coming in pushing snow, you're coming in in the dark of the night when there's a break-in at the middle school, you're coming in. He's been in a difficult position and I, and I just think it's the right thing to do. So I appreciate your comment.
Do the, do all the classified staff get retirements?
Yes.
All wait, the bus drivers, the custodians?
Yeah, they're considered PERF, Public Employee Retirement Fund opportunities. And the answer is no, not all of them qualify because not all of them have worked 185 or, you know, there's some stipulations for the state to recognize certain positions as perf qualified. But as long as they're perf qualified, which means they're full-time and they work 10 years, they get a, they do get a retirement. So that is a great thing.
I make a motion that we approve.
Second. Tim's a good guy.
Who's second? Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
The second component of this is, you know, last year, we, we put together a teacher retirement incentive program. You know, when our teachers retire, they get $2,000 for their sick days. Now, they are paid very nicely through VIBA plans and other things along the way. But the biggest transition for our teachers is, you know, I really, I can afford my day-to-day retirement, but the, the, the cost of medical has gotten so high. And we just recently put on a VIBA plan within the last eight years, I think, maybe. And, and so what we have done occasionally over the last five, six years I've been here, we've offered some additional incentives if you retire. And in essence, we've done it, this is our third time, saying, well, if you retire by such a date, we'll give you $5,000 a year. So last year, we offered that and we had some teachers, quite a few take advantage of it. So when a teacher retires at 72 and we replace them at 36, it's a tremendous savings to the school district. So, you know, Kevin Banks and I, we talked about, well, you know, we've done it, this is, this will probably take care of it. Well then, the state of Indiana is talking about changing perf and turf and, and how that's all calculated. So now we have some teachers that were really not planning on retiring last year, three specifically, that have really have been talking to financial advisors and said, man, I wish I would have taken advantage of that last year if I knew they were going to change this to teacher retirement. So Kevin and I have talked and we thought, what we'd like to do is take last year's retirement plan and extend it. So if you retired last year, you got $5,000 for three years into your VIBA, which is a medical retirement account. So what we'd like to do is to extend this out so that, in essence, we're not going to give you three years, but we'll give you two years so that you kind of did take advantage of it last year. So we really want to kind of extend that for anybody else that wants to retire. We hadn't planned on doing this, but with the state possibly changing how they're doing annuities and other things, I know if they do that, I, I could lose a large sum of money, you know, just at age 55. So, so it's 55 to 60 that weren't going to retire that now are thinking about retiring. So it's not a lot of money, but remember, you know, it, it might be enough to get some people to retire and we save a large sum of money when some of them retire right off, right off the bat. So, you know, it's, it's more than cost neutral to be cost savings. And we know we have at least three teachers that have talked about, very seriously about it. Couple have talked to Tom, one has talked to me. So it's really more of an extension of what we were doing last year.
Okay, fine.
Sorry. Dr. Keely and I talked and real quick before we get into the security proposal, Bob Brown suggested a few minor wording changes to the contract before we sign it. However, structurally and component-wise, nothing will be changing. So we're hoping we could approve it tonight, if all of you guys don't mind, and then have it signed at our work session once the wording changes are made. So the security systems for the middle school, where we've had two break-ins this year already. So far, other things we've done as well, we've extended the fence out around the chiller section of the middle school, put barbed wire around the top because one of the biggest, easiest ways to get on there, if you were climbing the fence and, I mean, some of our chilling pipes out, they were almost like a step ladder to get up onto it and it wasn't that hard. So it's going to be fun for them to try to get into that. We also repaired some doors and stuff that they broke during that process. The contract will come with 29 cameras for the school. I looked at it, I really don't think you can make it 15 feet in that school without getting caught on a camera or a motion sensor now. Our current equipment in there is lease-rental through Circle City who we're with right now. So all our motion sensors will be changed out, which is actually a good thing because we tested some of them out the other day and you had to get about 10 feet from them before they actually picked you up. So it doesn't really serve much purpose. There will be, the entire outside of the school will be locked down. There will be an actual entry intercom camera at, I believe it's 1W at the middle school where you'll have to buzz in. The camera will pop up, Debbie Dotson at the front desk, we will see your face, you'll have to say why you're there. You, she can even check your ID at, outside of the door before she even buzzes you in and then she can buzz you in. then she can buzz you in. Another big change will be the door behind Debbie Dotson. I don't know how many have been in the middle school. There's that back hallway that leads to the student hallway and right now, if somebody really wanted to force their way in, they could just blow by her and get back into our student area. So, that door is going to become a security card door, just like the other main doors in the front, to where in order to get anywhere out of the office, you're going to have to swipe a badge to get through. With the new system, there will be, literally the changeover will be probably a 30-minute delay in the security system. They'll unplug the current pads, put on their pads and then methodically go through and replace all the sensors and get everything switched over to them. But security-wise, as soon as those pads change over, we'll go just from Circle City to CSC like that. And it might, the time it takes them to change the pads, the only time it will be down will be during the day.
How soon are we looking to start the install once this is approved?
Spring break. We wanted to look for a stretch of time where students won't be there. That way it's minimal interruption. Then in case for some reason we did set off the alarm while we're going there, we don't have students in class and alarm going off everywhere.
Is there a long-term plan to do each of the other schools?
Yes, we would like to do, I mean, as you can see, it's not exactly the world's cheapest process, but it is needed. So, we would like to do the middle school first, see how that goes and then start working on the other schools during the summer, depending on if we can get the full amount of the next safety grant. That should fund almost the rest of the schools. There might be a little gap that we have to wait off on one school or figure out a few other funding options to finish it off, but we'd like to hopefully get all the schools done by the end of the summer.
Can I ask a couple of process questions as far as when a parent comes into the middle school, are they, when they're asked for ID or, you know, what their matter is, are they outside?
Yes, they're outside. If you think of the middle school, you have the outside parent structure and then the foyer in front of school. In order to buzz in, you'll be kind of under that little, there's probably about three-foot concrete or a brick canopy over there, the system. So, you can stand in there, buzz in, so you're not going to be completely exposed to the elements. So, from outside, you will be buzzed in. Say there's a issue with the parents or something, you know, they're not supposed to be there, we could automatically call Mark Parker, have him over there and they will never step foot in the school.
So, it is outside, it's not in the foyer?
No, it's completely outside.
It'd be problematic to have it in, because we'd have to replace the interior doors. So, in our discussion, for a number of reasons, it's safest to keep them all the way outside.
Sure.
We need to do, you know, something.
The other aspect, there'll be a computer at the main desk that will show all the cameras. So, any point in time, Tom can walk out and look at all the cameras in the building from his laptop. Most of these systems, you can actually view them from home. When I was at Noblesville, I used to watch Noblesville basketball games from my house on my, my computer because we had a gym. It gives us a full view and if we ever have a crisis in a building, then central office could be the central hub. You know, they can come there and log on the computers, you can do remotely and it's just a system that really takes us into the 21st century of school safety.
We've needed to do this for a long time.
Does the system record also, so like?
It will, we have a DVR backup. It will be, I believe, 30 days and say if a bike breaks out or something we need for a case later, we can grab literally that two-minute section only, save it to our hard drive and then pull it up whenever we need.
It asks to save it for insurance purposes, doesn't it?
Only for certain lengths of time. So, after 30 days, it just kind of wipes that next day and proceeds and if there's something we need to go along, we can. With this, there are three cameras outside. One will face the back parking lot, one will face where the parent visitor section is up front and then one camera will be on the auxiliary gym facing the main entryway to our gym, which we think is fantastic for insurance reasons because we've had many parents before say, "Oh, your bus pushed me into that flower pot and that's how the accident happened." Or, you know, "It was slippery and I fell on your ice and that's why I broke." And, you know, we can pull up the camera now and seriously see, you know, our bus did or was icy or no, you're just a little bit.
Legally, do we have to have any signs of it to say that you were being recorded?
I do not believe so.
Those are silly flower pots.
The way the canyons are viewed.
Anybody have any other questions about the contract? Would like to make a motion to approve? Ben?
Aye.
Tim? All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Okay, we have a, we have donations. I'm going to go through all of my qualities. Would like to make a motion to approve those donations.
Motion to approve.
Would like to second please?
I'll second.
Tammy? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. And Dr. Kaiser, you want to talk about the council meeting that?
Yes. Yeah, we have a district, community council meeting scheduled for last Thursday and unfortunately Brother Nature does not cooperate. We were planning on having it if we even had a two-hour delay, but that didn't work out. So, Robin and I looked at the calendar, there's not very many days between now and then to reschedule that. So, we were just going to move ahead and meet on February 20th, I believe, our next date.
That's the first day.
Yes, I guess the 20th, that's, that's a makeup day for some of the things we'll talk about. But, and maybe to talk about the structure and have the principals talk about it. Remember we went away from the building-specific community councils and PTAs and PAs or OEs?
OEs.
OEs, sorry. Just because, no, parents didn't show up for that. So, we have a list of, Robin, of how many people currently serving on the community council?
I think approximately 50.
50. And if there's any others that'd like to serve, but you were part of that last time when we met for strategic planning, you know, we'd welcome more members and we were going to have that serving as, really as our, our district-wide PTO slash community council. And, you know, part of our goal is to talk about school uniforms. Yes, parents, we are seriously, we are planning on putting school uniforms in at some level. You know, we haven't decided to the extent whether it's K-8 or whatever, but we will be proposing that here in the next couple of months and that'll be a great topic. We're, you know, our, our 21 performance topics that we have, targets that we have, those are going to be issues, not really issues, but opportunities that we're looking at. So, it's trying to get involved more in a district level and we still have, if you're a community member and you don't have kids in school and you'd like to serve on it, please contact me. Brownsburg has a really program that Robin's father's involved in where their superintendent meets with a group of parents in the community and just does a lot of things about information what's going on in the district. So, it'll be a revisit, it's our strategic plan that's been posted on our website. And so, we were going to kick that here again now in February because of the weather.
Is it always going to be the third Thursday?
I just said it that way, but I'm pretty flexible on that.
Third Thursdays are the same time.
Okay. Well, we can revisit those dates. Is there better than 96 Thursdays? I'm pretty flexible. We can go back to the entire calendar. Or Wednesday's better?
Wednesday's better.
Not Wednesday.
I know, I know you can't always be there because you're our class, but between the two of us, we can alternate it.
We can alternate.
Tom and I teach a budget class for the N State on Wednesday nights. So, we, between the two of us, we can alternate. So, well, Robin and I, we'll get back to the calendar and again, if there's other parents out there that want to be involved in it, let us know. And I just, you want to ask me other questions about that?
No, I just kind of, you know, actually I ran into him today at work and had mentioned, you know, if there was anything I could come about with the strategic planning.
Right.
I was honored to be on that and just to kind of try to follow up and see where it was and what's been done and, you know, trying to get more, you know, community involvement back.
Right.
That was one of the committees that I was on. But I feel it's very important, you know, allowing parents to come in as well and, you know, be involved. I mean, that's important, I think, at least for myself. You know, my kids, my kids will do better in school knowing that their parents are here. So, that's important.
We're glad to recruit you back to beyond if you're interested and if you have some time, so.
Yeah.
Okay. And like I said, you know, we had the principals recommend 10 parents, you know, there's no limit on really how many we can go and it'd be nice. I know last time we had some community business people, try to reach out to some others. I know Eric Brown served on that, some other people really provided some good input. And, and the question that was asked, hey, where's the strategic plan? Basically, you know, what you just heard tonight about the security cameras, that was part of our strategic plan, discussion on I-Step and Test Course, that's part of it. And from that strategic plan, we've now developed 20 different performance targets that we're working on. And, you know, we put that on the web, we've emailed that link out to parents and, and I did have a couple of parents ask us about some things and I worked with them on that. So, it's kind of a living, breathing document for us.
And do you want to talk about the makeup date?
Yes, as of right now, I was asked, Melody, again, people ask, they'll respond to the website. I had asked, are we going to make up Martin Luther King Day? The answer is absolutely not. We're not going to do that for a variety of reasons. Now, one of our local school districts has to do that because of when graduation is scheduled. Our, our graduation is a week after we finish up, so that's not an issue for us. Most schools in Marion County are not going to school next, or they're, they're going to school, they're not going to school Monday and they're keeping that as a holiday and so are we. So, our proposed makeup days are President's Day the 17th, May 16th, which was a built-in snow day, and then the Monday before graduation, which we normally would not have been in school that day, that is a makeup day. Kevin Banks and I talked about, said, "Well, why don't we go ahead and take President's Day off and then we'll go two days in June?" My fear that is January 14th. And if you remember last year at spring break, we had lots of snow. I just, you know, I'd rather go President's Day in case, you know, we could have to go three or four days in June if the weather turns bad again. So, but I'm open to your input, you know, on President's Day going or not going, that's really the only question.
It's still too early in the snow season.
Yes, that's our concern.
It's Indiana.
You know, I talked to Robin, we could always say, "Well, listen, we'll, we'll leave President's Day kind of tentative and if we don't have any snow days, we'll take that off." But I, I just, I think parents want to know. People want to know we're in school and so if it's okay with you, I'll send something out. And I did get feedback from our Teachers Association on this through Kevin and we discussed this process. And the biggest question came up, well, can we go on MLK Day? No. And then can we go the first week of intercession? The answer was no because parents have vacations planned, you know, over those two weeks and those are kind of off limits. And plus, we have some days built in, we should be hopefully okay. We do have the ability to move graduation back because it's held on our campus. Some of the large school districts, they're renting out the Coliseum, the Convention Center, Conseco Fieldhouse, they, you know, they're, they're tied into that. And that's why we make graduation a week later, just in case.
Okay, before we adjourn, anybody have any information? Yes, sir.
I got one thing. As you know, I'm really adamant about transportation. And so, on my own, since I had plenty of time of being on the range with nothing to do, I stumbled across a place called Red Flex Traffic Systems. And they have something that, and I've only researched it at my level, I haven't called and talked to anybody, I'll leave that up to you guys. But what this is, is they put cameras on, on the buses, on the outside by the stop arms. There's no upfront cost, it's 100% violator funded, potential to generate surplus funds, has 24/7 customer defense, it's legally defensible, it's 100% compliant with all local, state, county and federal laws. I'd like for you guys to explore this because it gives, gives a view of the front, the side, it's low-level light, no light, it gives you 12 seconds of DVD footage of the incident. And, you know, you, you have to, you know, figure out how, how the, once they, we use it, okay, how we're going to get the money from the violators. I'm sure there's probably a contract or something you got to go through with these guys, but the average ticket for running a stop arm in Indiana is $254. That's core cost in the ticket, so.
And it's more than that, it's just protecting the kids and once they know that we have that, that's a big story.
But that's something that, you know, they, they're going to run the stop arm, but they're also paying to keep that to nail somebody else or themselves again.
Well, if you talk to our bus drivers, this is a huge, huge problem with people that just disregard, just flat disregard it. And so, yeah, it'd definitely be something to work into.
And I, you know, I just thought it would be something neat to look at and then, you know, get back with us and let us know.
Tom, can you give us a 30-second update on VersiTran?
All the buses now have Ggets and so, the website has, we haven't had all the tutorials to learn how to map them and watch them. And we have put up our fence, but we can put up the fence, which means we designate exactly where our perimeter of our school corporation is. So, we're probably 60% ready to go, maybe a little more. We just have the tutorials and the personnel, we got the hardware done, so we have some of the hardest, difficult parts. So, that's kind of where we're at with that piece. Beth Skirvin is the one who's going through the tutorials and so it's kind of like a class that she's learning, going online and talking through that. So, it does take a little bit of time. So, we're probably 60% there and that was our goal really to get to where we're at over Christmas break. So, I feel like we're on schedule on that. So, we're going to put another timeline together, another month, and I anticipate getting, starting to do all spring sport trips, all the ECA trips through VersiTrans and through our, our mapping system. So, principals are next to be taught and the athletic directors are next to be taught how to go online and select a trip, order a trip, put it into the hop per approval will go through electronically and then we'll get all the swing and things. So, I'd say we're 60% through there. And it's been about, what, two months since we talked about it? So, that's good.
By the way, Mike thinks we're looking that up.
Student guardie. Student guardie, it's good, that's good.
Anybody else? Would I like to make a motion to adjourn? Oh, before we adjourn, we need, right after this, we have a board of finance meeting for just a second.
And Janice, if we could maybe get, I'll be here tonight, get a quick picture.
No.
Yes, smile. You're here, Mike, drop us, we're going to get a picture. So, if we could just take two minutes.
Motion to adjourn meeting in a second.
Second.
Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Post.